Recording has begun.
All right, it's 7:01 PM. All right, good evening. I'm calling the Tuesday, May 18th, 2021 Regular Meeting of Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to order. The time is 7:02 PM. Please note that in support of the physical distancing during the local public health emergency and accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order that Relax Brown Act rules during the public health crisis, we're conducting the meeting via video conference. Because we are video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when commissioners, staff, presenters, and the public will provide comments. If you've called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comments. For the benefit of the recording, please practice consider video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you are not speaking and limit distracted behavior when on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll call this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Warren?
President.
Vice President Vaughn?
Present.
Commissioner Kearney?
Here.
Commissioner Sherlock?
Present.
Commissioner Spreen?
Here.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
And all seven commissioners are present. For the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a presenters' and staff roll call. Santa Clara County Cadre Co-Founder Hovey.
Here.
You, Assistant Fire Chief Glass?
Here.
Strategic Planning Consultant Scott?
Here, good evening.
District Consulting Engineer Tarantino?
Here.
Emergency Services Manager Gluham?
Present.
General Manager Logan?
Here.
Lead Deputy County Counsel Chelliden?
Present.
Assistant County Counsel Mitra?
Present.
Cert Program Analyst Bebe?
Present.
And Special Project Service Consultant Hendricks. I don't think I saw her. So presenters, consultants, and staff are accounted for.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item two, Commission President's remarks. So hopefully everyone is enjoying this beautiful spring weather before it turns hot and, you know, summer season sets in. Want to thank the staff once again for generating a really impactful agenda tonight. You know, we've been at this, I counted on my fingers and toes. This is our 13th remote meeting since this whole thing began. And so hopefully some point this summer, we'll all be able to get together in person. But, you know, until that time, we'll continue to move forward and appreciate this, all the hard staff work that's required to make this happen. And I think tonight, you know, is a pretty impactful agenda. A lot of work has gone into it, and we're going to cover some, some really important things. And so with that said, let's move on to item three, which is public comment. All right, persons wishing to address the commission on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussions or actions tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the number of speakers requires the commission president to impose shorter time limits. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda at this time?
Sir, this is Steve Jordan.
All right, Steve, please proceed.
Am I the only one?
The moment, yes.
Okay, I'm Steve Jordan. I'm an elected director of Crystal Hills Water District and Bosco, the Bay Area Water Conservation and Supply Agency. I've spoken a couple times. I realize there's some new commissioners, so I thought it'd be useful for me to brief them as well as maybe remind some of the existing commissioners. Prisima began investigating leak detection equipment for underground pipes in 2016, and in 2018, we evaluated a recently introduced cellular-based system that we decided we wanted to deploy. We met with the, the fire commission in March of 2019 and reviewed the system, brought samples in. And we were, we presented it to the commission as well as to the fire, county fire. And these, these systems made by EcoLogics, they reference really well. They are being deployed in Santa Clara County by San Jose Water Company. In San Jose, Saratoga, Cupertino, they're deploying 10,000 of these in Santa Clara County, in their territory. They think it's a real game-changing technology. It will reduce water loss, catches the leaks early, and, you know, reduces fire service interruptions before catastrophic main breaks occur. They basically catch the leak as it starts. We would install these at no cost to Los Altos Hills County Fire District, and we would provide our own power and installation services. However, oh, and, and as I said, Chief Lolly and Tony Bowden both approved these, and obviously they're approved in the rest of the county also. But to date, the commission has not allowed us to install these anywhere for no apparent reason. We were awarded a $50,000 grant from Valley Water in 2019. That's expired now. And I've spoken in January of 2020, January of 2021, I've requested meetings. It's all been declined. So we want to get on with this. We think it's a matter of public safety. It's really required to install these because we have older mains. It's sort of in compliance with California law now that requires you to use common technology, which this is, to minimize leaks. So we are requesting that the commission overrule the general manager and allow us to install these sensors. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, any further public comment? All right, seeing none. Thank you. We will now move on to item four, which is the consent calendar and changes to the order of the Board of Commission Agenda. So we're on to item four, which is consent items, items four A through J. Are there any staff comments on the items?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, President Warren. On item four D, I would like to make a comment to update that Essentials of Functions Report on COVID-19. Today, the county health department released a press notice, and Santa Clara County is moving to the yellow tier tomorrow, and that's five, nine, March, May 19th, and will follow California state masking rules. So everyone is required to wear masks indoors, and vaccinated individuals can go unmasked outdoors. The interesting statistics is case rates are one-third less than last month. There's a positivity rate of 0.5%, which is the lowest rate reported. 75% of Santa Clara County residents 16 and older have one vaccination, and nearly 60% of the residents are fully vaccinated. So this is my update to item four E. Thank you.
Right.
Let's say, excuse me, four D.
Four D.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Are there any questions from the commission on the items or any commissioner like to change, make changes to the consent calendar or order the agenda? All right, seeing none. I will now entertain a motion. While the commission, they're making the motion and the commissioner seconding the motion, please state their names for the benefit of the recording to accept the consent calendar.
Move, we accept the consent calendar. This is Joan.
Thank you, Joan. Need a second, please?
I still have a second.
Thank you, George. All right, the item is open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commissioners on the consent calendar?
Yes, Commissioner Vaughn.
Go ahead, Melvin.
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself. I wasn't present at the meeting.
Thank you. District Clerk Vargas, please note that.
Just, all right. President Warren, just for the record, Commissioner Vaughn, I'm assuming you just mean for approval of the minutes, right?
That's affirmative.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any public comment on any of the items?
Ellen has his hand raised.
Ellen?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to talk about item four H. Four H and, and it's about an operations manager description and a consulting agreement to recruit for that position. I think the commission has the cart before the horse. There hasn't been, well, most companies where I work at, if you wanted to add somebody to the staff, you'd have to put together a justification analysis and substantiate the need for the position either due to how it would increase revenue, services, or reduce costs. There's been no justification for this position. There's no presentation on why it's necessary. There's been no commissioner discussion about why this position should be added. I've looked at the job description. Everything in the job description seems to be administrative tasks. It isn't clear who reports to the operations manager. What is the reporting relationship? This organization has 3.5 FTEs at this point in time, including the general manager. It doesn't seem like the general manager has an excessive span of control. The organization doesn't have any specific timelines, no measures of effectiveness. The strategic plan doesn't has measurable milestones. I don't see what on the plan for 2022 necessitates this addition of this person. Last couple of months, we've added two additional people going from half-time to full-time. We're now at 3.5 FTEs. Shortly, hopefully, we will stop having to report to the two subcommittees as to what we're not supposed to be doing. The district doesn't offer any benefits, which will affect who can apply for this position. The district doesn't have any offices or plans for offices, so there'll be no place for this person to, to locate. I suggest that the commission have some discussions about why this position is necessary and what the benefits would be relative to the cost of adding the person. And I suggest that you wait a few more months before deciding to add this additional person. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Mark?
Yes, Kabina?
I'm a new commissioner, and I had similar thoughts to, to Alan. And, but I did speak with Jay Logan, and she gave me a little bit of background about why this position was needed. But I would like further clarity. Is it still possible to pull this item and discuss it?
Certainly. All right, District Clerk Vargas, let's move this to the general manager's report. That would be item H.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion is now amended on the floor to accept the consent calendar as is with item H moved to the general manager section. All right, any further public comment?
We just clarified, President Warren, the maker of the motion, and that the seconder of the motion agrees with the amendment as well, just for the.
Certainly. Joan, do you agree with the amendment?
I agree.
George, do you agree?
Yes.
All right, there we have it. Okay, that said, is there any further public comment? Seeing none, the, then let's move on to a roll call vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Recused.
To clarify, you recuse on the, on the minutes only?
Yes, that's affirmative.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion for item number four passes seven to zero with one recuse on the minutes, item four A, and the moving of item four H to the general manager report under item nine.
Great, thank you. All right. Okay, we'll now move to item five. Receive the presentation from Santa Clara County Collaborative Agencies Disaster Relief Effort Cadre. Tonight, we have Marcia Hovey, who is the co-chair of Santa Clara County Cadre and the Emergency Services Manager for the town of Los Altos Hills, joining to provide the presentation. This is Hovey. Thank you for sharing with us tonight. Please provide, provide the presentation.
Thank you. Good to see everyone. Lot of familiar names. I, I have two hats. You might recognize my name because I'm also the emergency manager for Los Altos Hills until the 30th of June this year. That'll be my, the end of my 10th year. Everyone see the screen okay? And you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, so in addition to being the emergency manager for Los Altos Hills, I have been for a long time a part of the leadership of Cadre. And just last month, I was chosen as the interim executive director. And so I will explain who Cadre is and how we work with the community during disasters. If my computer will. There we go. Did it skip one? Sorry, let me go back. Yep. Okay, so Cadre, you already heard the long name, Collaborating Agencies Disaster Relief Effort. They were founded in 1989. It's a group of nonprofits that just before the, the Loma Prieta earthquake had started to get together and talk because they felt that having pre-existing relationships would make a disaster go better if they were working together on the problems of helping the community. They stayed in that form until 2019, October of 2019, when we became a 501(c)(3). And at that time, Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors named us the official voluntary agencies active in disaster for Santa Clara County, even though we had been at the whole time. We have responded to every disaster that's happened in Santa Clara County since 1989. Cadre had no staff. All of that time, there was no staff, and so it was just a leadership committee made up of some of the key nonprofits like the Red Cross, the Food Bank, Catholic Charities. And that's all that are going to pop into my head right now. The Silicon Valley Independent Living Center, the Bill Wilson Center. And they, they would get together and talk about issues related to the challenges of disasters happening and, and try to advocate with the government on how to make it better. So the day job, when there are no disasters, we act as that voad. We conduct resilience events, workshops, and symposiums for nonprofits to get together and make them think more about their disaster response and how they will be able to help the community. We do operational planning with local government, and we conduct exercises and provide technical assistance for nonprofits to help them if they're writing emergency plans or they just are wondering what's the best way to go about doing planning for their organization. Some of the workshops that we hold, the agency emergency planning and continuity of operations are two of the basic ones. We have been doing training in the county since 2005, funded through Santa Clara County's Emergency Management Performance Grant. And the, the other, the other trainings that we do depend, kind of depend on what's, what people are interested in. So we're always looking for new ideas to, to add on to workshops. We are structured in a function team structure so that we have lead organizations as part of our Board of Directors for Access and Functional Needs Disaster Case Management, in-kind donations, so not cash donations, but just the, the stuff that people donate during disasters, food sourcing and distribution, and most emotional resilience, immigrant support, mask care and shelter. That includes animals and housing. So when Cadre is activated for a disaster, the disaster happens, nonprofits activate their local emergency plan. They start to take care of business where they are. They can notify Cadre that they may need assistance. A local government may notify Cadre if they realize that this is going to be an event that's going to exceed the, the capabilities of local government because local government doesn't have the, the types of services that Cadre can offer, and you'll see what those are in a little bit. The duty officer, we have a 24/7 duty officer will get called. They notified the board that there's been a request for activation. While that's happening, the organization is continuing to respond to its internal needs. The board looks at the scope of the event, gathers some more information. Sometimes, sometimes it's just a requirement of maybe, maybe they just need an access and functional needs expert. So we'll call that representative and not have to activate the whole, the whole system. But for something like an earthquake or like COVID, everyone was activated, then we will start having coordination team meetings with the whole, with all of the function teams. And what happened? We'll notify any of those nonprofits that are part of the function teams and ask them to assist in the response if they can. And then we'll just continue to assist as much as possible and then conduct it and after-action assessment so that we can do it better next time. So the response activities, the inter-agency coordination calls involve everyone, FEMA, the state, the cities that are impacted, the nonprofits, sometimes private sector volunteers. Everyone is on that call. The purpose of them is to, to inform the nonprofits on what's happening at the government level. So we have those government folks on to give a status update of what they know. The nonprofits provide status updates on what they know based on their boots on the ground being in the community, and then they share that information. If it wasn't COVID, this would be an in-person meeting, and then the function teams would break off. So anybody that's doing mask care, anybody that's doing mental health for emotional resiliency, they would break up in the room and they would start to talk about how they're going to divvy up all of the responsibilities. The duty officer also listens in on the county's government calls with all of the local jurisdictions and gives all of the local jurisdictions an update on what's happening. We'll continue to provide technical assistance. During COVID, we had to assist nonprofits that were signing contracts with local government to make sure that everyone understood what the disaster cost reimbursement requirements were so that they were signing something that was fully going to allow them to recoup their costs. And then we catalog all of the resources that are being offered so that there is a one-stop shop where people can find out what's, what's available. So just a little bit about the pandemic. This is the coordination calls. We take minutes of all of the coordination call meetings, so they go out pretty quickly after the meeting. The, the nice thing, the nice thing that's happening with COVID is that the chat feature on these calls is being very well-used. Any nonprofit that has a need posted in the chat, other nonprofits will pop up and say, I, you know, I know somebody, I can help you with that. So there was a lot of connection and coordination going on. Those are the, the, the four pillars of nation corporation. And that's what we, we try to do with these meetings to keep everyone on the same page. So for COVID, we've held 20 of them so far. Initially, they were weekly. Now we're, we've backed off to once a month. It got a little bit busy again with the vaccination, vaccine, vaccinations being ramped up, but we're, we're back to once a month now. And again, I already talked about the technical assistance. FEMA, FEMA requirements for documentation are incredibly complicated, and we brought in a couple of subject matter experts to help our nonprofits make sure that they were properly capturing costs. We did a bunch of webinars. First time we'd done virtual webinars, the good news is they're now all recorded and they're on our website. This is just four of them. I think we probably did. We were still doing some of our regular webinars on personal preparedness and agency emergency planning. So we've probably done, oh, close to 20, maybe 18 webinars in the middle of COVID. Some of our local nonprofits that stepped up that have helped, the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits saw that there was a huge need for personal protective equipment in the nonprofit sector. We were unable to get it from local government, and, and they had purchased it all. So the council of nonprofits was very creative. They reached out to the private sector that had all of their businesses closed down, and they collected all of the PPE from private sector. The VMC Foundation in Santa Clara County put it in their warehouse, and then it was distributed to nonprofits who were out in the community, helping people with no protection. San Andreas Regional Center, which is one of our two co-leads for access and functional needs, did a ton of outreach to make sure that people, people had the protective equipment that they need, especially the caregivers in, in residential homes and other homes where they were assisting folks with disabilities. Second Harvest is still very busy tripling their food distribution every week and providing to hundreds and thousands of people in Santa Clara County with, with over 300 partner organizations. CalDART, which is a disaster airlift response team, they're also volunteers, and they have been flying personal protective equipment from California to Washington because they had connections there and they needed, they needed the masks, and we were able to get them what they needed. Some of our national partners, Team Rubicon, which we have many Team Rubicon members in, living in Santa Clara County, which is a good thing because that means they can get here quickly. Um, core, lots of religious organizations have disaster relief functions as well. Good 360, which they get stuff. They, they're a logistics team, and they send notifications out that they have acquired things to see who wants them. This is, and let's see, Southern Baptist, Operation Barbecue Relief, which I'd never heard of before COVID, but they, they did barbecues. We did have international organizations that are supporting Santa Clara County. SeeWhatInternational has a, a ton of volunteers. That's what they do is they just provide volunteers to other events, and so we use them a lot when we were doing food distribution. We, they helped us in the, the S, the CZU Fire, Cadre was helping the folks at the CZU Fire, and they came over. ISRAID, which is another organization that we just met for this event that have done a ton of volunteer support operations, and they do really, really good mental health presentations on emotional resiliency and keeping, you know, keeping focused when you're on Zoom calls for six hours a day. There is a national voad website if you want to know all of the national partners because they will come into our community if we have a big enough event like the next earthquake. And there are 73 of them that, that are currently listed, and they're, they're huge, and they'll, they will swoop in, and Cadre will welcome them and put them into the function teams. There's a couple of the other disasters that we've, we've supported. We, the SCU and the CZU fires, the Salvation Army did meals to the hotels. The government put people into hotels. And then the Red Cross helped to support them. They gave gas debit cards out, and they did a lot of other things, but I couldn't list them all here. ITDRC, which let me see, information technology disaster. Oh man, Terry, you know, don't you? It's a, it's a volunteer group. They work nationally. They stand up internet. They've helped, they've helped school districts during, during COVID. And in Santa Cruz, they set up internet in the areas where they had lost all of their infrastructure. The footprint, footprint project, kind of the same. They do solar powered generators and they went into the CZU fire areas to provide generator power. So people could charge cell phones. Habitat for Humanity is now working on rebuilding, Restore, which is now doing discounted furniture and things for, for fire families. United Methodist was there doing, initially they and the Red Cross were at the, the fires to help with sifting through ash. And they, then they were sent away by government saying that they were not allowed to do that, which this was the first fires that we'd heard that that, there's a change there. So in the future, we're going to have to have some discussions about what's allowed and what is not. Because there are people like the United Methodist, Team Rubicon as well. They're very well versed in safety and personal protective equipment and ash. But because government wasn't familiar with them, they wouldn't allow them to do their job. And then United Policyholders is invaluable. They come alongside folks and tell them what their insurance rights are and tell them how to read their policies so that they understand what they do and what they are entitled to and what they're not. And they continue to offer webinars. We've had a public safety power shut off. The rock star of our power shut offs is always the Silicon Valley Independent Living Center, who has been advocating with PG&E in the state of California to get these Yeti generators that they can deploy to individuals who have, who require power that can't get out of their houses because they're, you know, physically disabled. They also provide hotel vouchers and rides to get people out of areas until the public safety power shut off is over. So they're, they're really good. The rest of, the rest of the preparedness for that between PG&E and the government now is, it's pretty stable. We've got a, a good plan in place, but it's always the access and functional needs. It's a challenge, but the Independent Living Center has done a fabulous job of making sure that folks in Santa Clara County know where to get resources if they need them. This is just them helping during COVID, doing food. Back a little further, the Coyote Creek Flood, the Southern Baptist came in. That was one of those national organizations. They rebuilt mobile home decks and skirting because the, in the flood area, there was several in the north San Jose Oakland Road area where the mobile homes were, were not destroyed, but they needed to be cleaned up. Team Rubicon came and did what they call muck out, which is pulling all of the vegetation and the trees out of the creek. Cutting them up and driving them away. And then Vivo, which is a, a very small nonprofit that's right in the flooded community that is supports a Vietnamese community. And they got a, a $3 million donation from an individual that was given to the city of San Jose to help support people. So you just never know who's, who's going to step up for each type of event. Long-term recovery. So after the fire engines leave and the Team Rubicons leave, there are years of recovery left. The flood, the Coyote Creek Flood just finished recovery a couple of months ago for the 283 families and that was 2017. So for the, the CZU Fire, I'm sitting on their, their long-term recovery committee. What they just met today, it's a formal committee. They have to have a dedicated team. They've got to have bylaws. They elect officers. They know it's going to be for two or three or five years that they're going to be managing this. They're working with nonprofits and the government. They're doing things like job training. They're replacing cars. They're doing mental health. They're doing funding for folks whose insurance didn't pay for everything. They're helping with construction and many, many other things. But those are kind of the big ones that they were talking about today. What does cadre need for response and recovery? Well, money. I mean, the first thing that we realized for COVID was that we had no staff. And so I worked for 13 months for free. Not full-time and it was, so I'm very happy that they're paying me now. But we're going to have to have standby money to hire people to help us ramp up because it doesn't make sense to do it all the time just during the disaster. We could have used warehouse space. There were a lot of donations that were offered to us, but we didn't have anywhere to put them. So we're going to try to look into that and identify and develop relationships with folks that we could call and say, we need warehouse space. We need more Public Information Officer contacts. We've now become part of a regional PIO team so that we get information faster. But we, I'll show you our website next. We put a lot of information up, but we can only put it up as fast as we know about it. Donations vehicle in place. Oh, not a vehicle, a car. We, we need a a place in, within Santa Clara County where donations can be given instead of giving them to national organizations. Because when they go to national organizations, they don't always make it back here. So we've got to create a, a local one-stop shop where everyone can donate there and it'll properly get distributed to the people helping. And then it was, as I mentioned, this discussion about the ash. We started a monthly newsletter during, during COVID. We will continue to do that and you can opt into it from our website if you want to do that. We also now take donations. If you order through Amazon and you don't have another favorite nonprofit, you can have cadre be your favorite nonprofit and we'll get a small amount of money every time you make a purchase. We are active on social media, Facebook in particular, and we do, we post almost in real time. And the moment we get information, it gets pushed out. This is our brand new website. It came live yesterday. And so you can down at the bottom, this is just a screenshot, but it, it's, it's very easy to use now compared to our other one. You'll particularly like the response and relief area. There's a COVID part, but we have it pre-set up so that it'll be fire flood power response. That information is automatically in here. So some of it's pre-populated and will stay populated like the trusted government sources and the trusted response agencies. So that when something like the SCU Fire happens again, they, people can log in here and see what the social media is for CalFire or for County Fire because information gets posted there faster. And so this, this will help people make good decisions. And that's the end of this presentation. If there are any questions.
All right. Any questions?
And I will, since I am, since I am just getting ready to, to leave Los Altos Hills. If anybody wants my opinion about choices for city managers or new emergency managers, I am more than happy. Because I put a lot of work in and I don't want to see it fall away.
All right. Thank you, Marcia.
Marcia. Question. I was just wondering what your response was to your webinars.
It's, it was more, well, our in-person meetings are normally about 30 people. Our, our webinars had between 30 and 80 people, depending on the topic. And some of them were listening from Sacramento. We had a lot of people that regularly were listening from north of us, from south of us. So it was really nice to be able to share that information. We have we have a good reputation for our training. And so it was nice to be able to share it with other people. Yeah. And then our, our coordination calls, I forgot to mention that they were up to 150 people on any one call and over 300 organizations participate.
Wow, impressive. Thank you.
Major. Kavita?
So Marcia, my question was, when the CZU Fire happened in the context of Los Altos Hills, what was the kind of engagement that you saw within your group?
So with Los, with Los Altos Hills, when, when that fire happened, with my Los Altos Hills hat on, Jay Logan and Heppenstall from, from Los Altos, Sarah Robesteli from the town, Tom Chin, who's the emergency manager for the city of Cupertino, Denise Cluane and I, and I think there might've been one other person and I'm forgetting. But we, we got together and scoped out the plan for sheltering. If we had to evacuate, the plan was we were sending, we were going to evacuate everyone to Deansa College. They were going to stay in their cars and be checked in to see if they needed, if they needed sheltering or if they had a place to go. And then we would send them to a hotel. We but since nothing, since nothing happened, that it was a good plan. It would have worked, but we, I'm updating our fire evacuation plan again before I leave. And so we will document some of that so that if, should COVID happen with the next evacuation, we'll be able to do that. But we had some really, really, really good discussions. It's amazing how much can get done in a short period of time when everyone is focused on that one thing and don't, don't have other priorities.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So it seems to me that we have so many multiple agencies working towards evacuation plan in when, if, when it happens and if it were to happen. So in terms of your organization, how does it differentiate itself from the other stakeholders? We're also working on that, on the same issue of evacuation.
Well, so cadre, it's not a response agency, so we would not be part of the evacuation. We would be, we would be the part of supporting the evacuees. So we don't, we don't get involved except to push information out to let, let the nonprofits make good decisions about whether they're in, in the line of fire, if you will, or if they're going to be able to help, how many people we think are going to be involved so that they can start to plan ahead on what kind of meals might need to be made. And just all of those logistics questions, you know, what's the demographics of the folks? So we can give them proper food and are there babies? Do we need diapers and all of that? So, so we're gathering information during the evacuation and then immediately on the ground after it's safe, but we're not part of an evacuation. It's, if that makes sense. So
thank you.
And that's the thing about volunteer, you know, voluntary organizations active in disaster. It's not that they're volunteers. It's that their organizations have no legal responsibility to help. And they're all voluntarily, you know, taking days, weeks, months, years out of their organizations to make that part of their organization's mission to help the community restore itself.
That's helpful. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions from the commissioners?
Sharing.
All right. Is there any comments from the public? All right, seeing, thank you, Marcia. Appreciate your time. None. We will now move on to item six, which is approval of agreement and funding of Station Eight. So this is item six A is the approval of the agreement between the district and central fire and the city of Palo Alto to establish and conduct fire protection and emergency medical services at Station Eight. Item six B is the approval of the delegation of authority to the district general manager to negotiate, amend and extend and modify the aforementioned agreement. And item six C is the report. General Manager Logan, please provide the report.
Yes, thank you, President Warren. The memorandum report is before the commission and I won't go through too much of the information that's in that. But I would like to, by way of background, mention to the Board of Commissioners that Los Altos Hills County Fire District commenced participation with the city of Los Altos to staff Station Eight in 1992. And that was in response to the devastating Oakland Hills Fire and the commitment to taking proactive steps with the city of Palo Alto to protect the vulnerable mutual boundaries by access to a fire station. The agreement continued into 2005 and then was not renewed in 2006. It was a total of 13 years. At the end of the fire season in 2020, we witnessed the CZU Fire and the SCU complex lightning fires. Talks of staffing Station Eight began between Los Altos Hills County Fire District, Central Fire and the city of Palo Alto. The Agreement Before You Tonight recognizes the benefits of partnership utilization of an invite, of an available fire station, rotation of apparatus, equipment and fire crews to increase fire protection to the parties. And the memorandum report summarizes the salient points of the agreement. Recommendation one, recommended for approval brings to the, to the fire district commissioners the agreement for the operations and funding of Station Eight. Central Fire and City of Palo Alto will jointly provide fire suppression and protective services necessary to operate Station Eight for the mutual benefit of the parties. And Los Altos Hills County Fire District will provide funding for those operations. The agreement will be automatically extended for four additional fire seasons through December of 2025, unless terminated earlier in accordance with the terms of the agreement. The agreement has been reviewed for form and legality by the Office of County Council. And then recommendation two recommends the approved, that recommends for approval brings the fire district commissioners, a delegation of authority to the general manager to make two types of agreement amendments. One is an amendment as long as not to exceed amount does not increase by 10% per fiscal year. And the term of the agreement does not extend beyond December 31st of 2025. And two, minor modifications as specified in the delegation language in the event of a potential threat to public safety. And so for both of those recommendations, I recommend approval for recommendation one and two. So thank you for that opportunity to give an overview of the report and I'm available for questions or just listen to discussion amongst the commissioners. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Are there any clarifying questions from the commissioners?
President Warren?
Yes.
This is, we Deputy County Counsel Chris Chell, and I just wanted to mention that and introduce Assistant County Counsel Steve Mitra in light of our office's representation of County Fire and Los Altos County Fire. I mean, this particular transaction, Steve Mitra is representing Los Altos County Fire and is available to answer questions of the commission. I represented and represented County Fire in this transaction. So I'm going to defer to Steve on any questions to counsel for this item. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Chris.
Evening commissioners.
Hello. All right. So are there any clarifying questions about items six A through C from the commissioners? Okay, here you're seeing none. What we're going to do is we're going to go through and we'll vote on each of them independently as, as a specific item. Alan, I'll get to you when we get to the public comment question section. Okay, I will now entertain a motion for item six A, which is approval of the agreement. I need a motion and a second, please.
Screen moves.
Thank you, Roger. Your second.
One second.
Thank you, Melvin. All right. So this is, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none. All right. Is there any public comment on the item? Alan. Your turn.
Thank you for the opportunity. First, let me say that I'm certainly in favor of the concept of sharing the manning of Station Eight. I will say I was surprised by the terms that were negotiated. And I guess I'll just list a bunch of questions to see if we can get some answers. First, why is the staffing split between Santa Clara County Fire Department and Palo Alto Fire Department? Why isn't it not just the Palo Alto Fire Department? Why isn't it not just the Palo Alto Fire Department? Why is it 12 hours a day? Our agreement with Los Altos Hills, excuse me, our agreement with the Santa Clara County Fire Department for the extra services that we put on in the summertime is 10 to seven, just nine hours a day. Why is a type six engine adequate? The district uses a type three. Why is Los Altos Hills County Fire District paying the full cost instead of splitting the cost with Palo Alto? Palo Alto normally man Station Eight on high fire danger days, which typically is 25 to 30 days a year. So since there's shared benefit, I, I don't understand why Los Altos Hills County Fire District is subsidizing Palo Alto. They're a well-off community. And I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned as to whether or not this staffing will adversely impact the staffing on, on high mode staffing, staffing days. And then lastly, the extra service that, that the Santa Clara County Fire Department provides for Los Altos Hills is only manned on the high fire danger days. It used to be manned throughout the summer season, but Chief Bowden made the decision that that wasn't a good utilization of the staff and actually taxed the organization heavily and decided or recommended that it be changed to simply on the high fire danger days. So those are a few questions about, about how the contract was negotiated and the purposes behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Are there other further questions from the public? Kavita, did you have a comment?
Just, is there somebody who could respond to all these?
Right.
Seeing a new commissioner, I do not have the background information that some of the other commissioners might have.
Yeah, Jay, Jay can provide the background. She was in the thick of negotiating the contract.
Yes, thank you. Well, a number of those questions are operational and I know Chief, Acting Chief Glasses on the conference. So Chief Glass, you want to talk about the operational, particularly the split between Palo Alto operationally and Central Fire and how that all came about? I'm sure you have a lot of thoughts there.
Yeah, I, I can speak a little bit to it. Alan's questions are, are, you know, valid. And I think some of the easier ones to talk about are the type three and the type six engine requirement. We put that into the contract to give us flexibility. Each of the different departments, staffs, both type three and or type six fire apparatus. And basically, to break that down, the type three would be very similar to the vehicle that's parked at Los Altos Hills. It's the larger of the wildland firefighting vehicle. We also have the smaller type that's built on like a Ford pickup body or a Chevy pickup body. That's a type six. The preferable delivery model would be the type three and both agencies are committed to that. However, if they go down mechanical, we wanted the opportunity to be able to use an alternate vehicle already within our fleet. Both of the agencies Palo Alto and Central Fire will be staffing primarily the type three unit there and only in the event of a mechanical failure will we then have a type six available. But we wanted to make sure that we continue to provide that service with no break in coverage. So I think that answers one of Alan's questions, hopefully on why that type three and type six were both listed within the contract. The other thing is the, the mode staffing contract that county fire has with Los Altos Hills remains in effect. So in conversation with the commission and or the general manager on the recommendation of the fire chief or designate the duty chief, we can continue to upstaff the additional type three engine at Almonte Fire Station. So essentially you would be having the rescue that staff there, the Palo Alto Station Eight shared fire apparatus between the jurisdictions and you would have your mode staffing as well if the commission so choose, choose or the fire district recommended to the, to the board. So that, that remains intact and available for us to deliver and provide that service to the hills. The split between Palo Alto initially started out as how could we find some shareable points within this contract? So Palo Alto was having a difficult time staffing that station for various reasons. We had an additional fire engine that we could make available at Central Fire and the hills was interested in having additional staffing. So this three-way partnership initially started out with Central Fire and Palo Alto Fire jointly staffing one piece of equipment. So we would actually have multiple firefighters from different agencies on one unit. This is a very outside the box concept. We have done it before with the Saratoga Fire Protection District when they began looking at merging with Central Fire. It was a great way to share ideas and cross-pollinate the different agencies' rules, regulations, policies and procedures as we began to look at how these two agencies were going to come together and work closer. Currently, right now, the two agencies are standalone. They have their own rules, regulations, policies and procedures. So there is some operational challenges and hurdles as well as some safety concerns and then some delivery model challenges when we mix staffing on individual units. My firefighters may not be trained on specific aspects of the equipment on the Palo Alto engine, including the pump panel, driving and operating, then we had insurance issues. So to alleviate these concerns, we decided that we would do a rotation on a monthly basis with each individual agency providing their own apparatus with their own equipment and their own people adhering to their own policies, procedures, rules and regulations. This was amenable to the management in both agencies as well as labor. And so the big key here was getting all of these different groups together unified around one thing and that was providing increased service to the, to the citizens of Los Altos Hills as well as Palo Alto. It doesn't hurt to have an additional fire engine because in the end that also keeps firefighters safe. So this was a win-win-win for all the agencies involved. I, I think I'll stop there because there's a lot of information. I'm happy to entertain any, any further questions that the, the commissioners may have and I really hope that this has addressed some of the concerns of Mr. Epstein.
Chief Fitz, Commissioner Kearney, can you speak to the, the 12-hour shift?
Sure. There was some discussion, I believe, from Mr. Epstein around the 10 o'clock to nine, seven o'clock in the evening shift that we had used several iterations of the mode staffing ago. Again, right now we're using the mode staffing based on fire weather conditions. And so those conditions, they don't, they don't confine themselves to the time of day. We find ourselves in red flag warning. We're in a wind event currently. We just have high humidity, which is nice. We're getting an onshore push, which keeps us out of red flag. That's, that's happening right now in this next 24 to 48 hours. But we're not in red flag, so we don't feel the need to upstaff. We have the capability with normal staffing. So the 12-hour shift works very well as we look at the staffing model and the availability of the unit. The majority of the people that will be using and traversing the Page Mill corridor and participating in activities in the park are from eight in the morning till eight in the evening. It also happens to coincide very nicely with our peak fire and burning windows. Now, there are times where the peak window may extend past 2000 hours, eight o'clock in the evening. And we have the autonomy at each agency to add on additional hours. And that was communicated with the general manager to make sure that those additional staff hours as needed are in the budget.
Great. Thank you, Chief Chris. Terry, did that answer your question?
It does. Thanks, Chief. Kavita, did you get your questions answered?
Mark, if I may, I'd like to make a comment. I understand that this is a really big contract and this is something the fire, you know, the fire district has been working for a long time and there's a big history to it. And I appreciate the work that everybody has done. It's just that I feel that, given that there are two new commissioners, I feel that we, I at least personally need way more information to be able to make a decision one way or the other. And I'm not saying I'm against it. I don't know, I'm not saying I'm for, for it. I just don't have enough information. So I think I would abstain on this because I feel maybe going forward, if we're going to make big decisions, the, maybe we need more information in the staff report, a greater opportunity to ask questions, more details.
Okay.
I just don't seem to have all these details in terms of, you know, how this contract was negotiated and all these questions that came up. I, I, I see the answers, but it doesn't give me an opportunity to ask for the questions to really understand what was behind these detailed negotiations. And I'm sure all of you do, but I just don't have that information today.
Fair enough. Thank you, Kavita. George, you have a comment?
I do. I appreciate your comments, Kavita, about having the information. And I will say it was also helpful, Chief Glass, to provide some of those, those answers in terms of the complexity. And I want to say I am extremely pleased at having such a complex agreement be implemented and developed in relatively short time period. Because let's face it, we don't have to be reminded by our station, the fire season is upon us. And so this is just a, a kudos in general to say we've got, gotten three different agencies involved. And, and I can tell you, having been to a couple of meetings, Supervisor Semidion is very interested in making sure that we handle this efficiently and effectively. And I, I am prepared to support this with great confidence.
Great. Thank you, George. And you, Roger?
The only thing I'd like to add is that, you know, and again, Kavita, this is one of the advantages I have from having been a part of this for a number of years is a, a common theme for us every time in talking about response times, especially during fire seasons, is the location of our fire station and how such a large portion of our district is not easily accessible or has, the trucks have to go up to 18 and around the Page Mill exit to get places. This is the, I'm really excited that this is the first time we've really had something that addresses that by using that station, which really borders, which is right on the border of both, both towns to really address some of the, that end of town that's always been an issue for response time. So I'm, I'm, this is actually a culmination of something that's been an issue for many years. I'm really pleased that, that everyone was able to make such huge contract come together so quickly. So I, my thanks also to the county folks and the lawyers involved to bring all the, the boilerplate together to make this work. So I, I can see why, you know, without the background, it would seem like something fairly major happening fairly quickly. But I think it really does address something and I'm really pleased also that it's such a regional approach to things to actually be working with a neighbor that we are so entwined with, but really haven't been working closely with. You know, I just happened to, actually by accident, hike up to Station Eight just last month. And when you stand there and you look around and say, where's Palo Alto, where's Los Altos Hills? You can't, you don't see the borders, but it's both towns completely in view from that station. So it's quite, you know, to me, that really brought it home how important that station is to be able to provide services for our residents. So I, I'm very pleased at this and I, thanks to all involved.
And George, I, I appreciate what you're saying. And like I said, I, I understand there's a long history and I appreciate the work that's been going on. Fire safety is critical, especially in this part of town. I totally understand it. I just feel for myself, I just don't have the background information to stand firmly behind it. And that does not take away from how brilliant this, you know, this three-party agreement is. I just feel like if I go for something, I need to know enough about it. That's my only concern. So I'm not going to vote against it. I'm just going to abstain. I just don't have enough background information from today's meeting and the information that was given to me.
Thank you. All right, Terry? Your hand up?
Actually, I think Melvin's hand was up first.
All right, Melvin?
That's fine. Either one of us can go, but based off of my previous career in the fire service, I also support this, this, this program. It's, it's imperative that that station not sit dormant, especially with the amount of fire hazard that surrounds it. So I fully support it. I think it's a good idea and I'm really happy to see that the two departments and the three departments are really, are getting together and, and using a regional approach in order to help mitigate a potential problem there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Melvin. Terry, over to you.
Thanks. Jay, can you speak to Alan's question about the respective cost sharing?
Yes, and I think what I would want to say there is, again, this was a ongoing discussion and there were shareable points that went back and forth between the, the chiefs and the various agencies. And we did the best we could to come up with an agreement between the parties through that negotiations. This agreement is not yet accepted by Palo Alto or the Board of Supervisors. That's the path it's on. And so it was the shareable points that then had the district being the funding agency for the cost allocation. And the other two agencies are providing the service and the equipment. And they are picking up those extra costs that go along with personnel that are not included in the wage cost. Those would be things such as the taxes involved, the workers' comp, the insurance. All of the liability falls on those two agencies, does not fall on the district of the fire district. And so those were the kinds of agreements that were made through those shareable points in the negotiations. And so that, that's how that cost sharing occurred. There are other parts to staffing that are not born and other parts to the liability and indemnification that are not borne by Los Altos Hills County Fire District. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Any further questions, comments from the commissioners? I too would like to add my, my support for this. I know that there was a, you know, it's, it's quite an achievement to get three parties to agree, to get this agreement in place. And I think it's strategically important for it to have this joint effort that improves public safety for the, you know, the community. And so I believe this is, you know, very important to do. Alan, did you have your hand up one further time?
I, I did. Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to mention to you that the budget is for $400,000 and the contract is for $558,000. So I just wanted to make that clear for any of the commissioners that didn't notice that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, is there any other further public or public comment or commissioners? That I'd like us to move through approval then? Seeing none? Okay. Now, we have a motion on the floor for item six. We'll now move to a vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote for item six A.
Okay, thank you. President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Abstained.
And Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one abstained.
Thank you very much. All right, I will now entertain a motion for item six B, which is the approval of the delegation of authority to the district general manager to negotiate, amend, extend and modify the aforementioned agreement. I need a motion and a second, please, for six B.
Spring moves.
Thank you, Roger. I need a second.
Kearney's second.
Thank you, Terry. All right, the item is open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none? If there's no further discussion, we'll now move to a vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote for item six B.
Thank you. President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka?
Abstained.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one abstained.
All right, so we now need to do a, wait, we don't have to approve the memorandum report. Very good. All right, thank you. We will now move on to item seven, the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Administration Monthly Reports to the county committees. Item seven A and seven B are various monthly reports presented to the county of Santa Clara. General Manager Logan, please provide the reports.
Yes, thank you, President Warren. The April monthly report and the slide deck and the management audit report to the Finance, Government and Operations Committee and Hewlett Committees are attached. The fire district has now completed six months of the 12-month reporting cycle to management audit and to the Board of Supervisors Committee. There's been good success in meeting the requirements of the management audit recommendations that were approved by the Board of Supervisors. And this is the end of my report. I thank you. And these are just, again, monthly reports for the And this is the end of my report. I thank you. And these are just, again, monthly reports for the Board of Commissioners to receive. I stand available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? All right, is there any public comment on these items? All right, hearing none. We will now move on to item eight, receive the Santa Clara County Fire Chief Report. Item eight A is the report. Assistant Chief, Fire Chief Glass, please provide the report.
All right, good evening, commissioners, members of public and staff. This evening we'll be presenting the April 2020 or one report, excuse me. Can everyone see the screen okay?
Yes.
Okay, again, we're starting to see an uptick in calls. If you take a look at where we were in 2020, which was the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, we were at about 228 calls. And that's in box, the top left corner of your screen there for 2020. Shows 228 calls. We're at 274. So it's a slight uptick as we start to see people out moving around again as some of the COVID-19 restrictions. Have been lifted. As you were heard earlier today, we're going to be transitioning to yellow tier starting tomorrow. So we anticipate more return to work, more congestion, more traffic. And that will come more motor vehicle accidents and the potential for increased call volume as we transition out of COVID-19. We sit currently with our normal average of responses per hours of the day. I mean, you can see that's reflected in the blue bar on the value graph in the middle of the page in the left-hand side. Orange is the the weight of the response. Excuse me. Orange is the incident, blue is the weight of the response. So that's the number of apparatus that are responding to those calls. So you can see around noon and around five, four or five o'clock in the afternoon is when we see the greatest amount of response need within the jurisdiction. Of 60% of the call volume continues to be EMS, 23 service calls, 5% fire alarms, and then from there it trails on off. We were dispatched to two fires, but when we arrived, either the fires were so small or they were extinguished prior to our arrival, which is why we have a $0 loss for the month. Response times look really good, continue to be shooting for seven minutes, 59 seconds, 90% of the time in the urban density areas and 1159 in our rural densities, and we're well below that. With that, I'm happy to take any questions on the data. And here is a map showing the distribution of the calls throughout the district.
Chief Glass, if assuming that the board, City of Palo Alto approves the set agreements and the Board of Supervisors approves said agreements from item six, hopefully in July you can start reporting the metrics from Station Eight.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, I hope you can see the cursor. Obviously, the cursor circling around the foothills open space. The greatest area of calls where we would see the benefit of this unit's deployment would be beginning right around this area, down here and around. And so in the initial stages, just to make sure that all of the Station Eight operations are worked out, we'll continue to send a dual response in these areas. To assure that there's no drop in service. What we wouldn't want to do is rely on this new resource without it being vetted and tested. So for the first few weeks to a month. We'll continue to send the resource out of El Monte Fire Station. And they'll start towards the call, but obviously they should be beat by the unit coming out of Station Eight, at which point that unit will then cancel and return. And so we'll do that to make sure that we have redundancy. But the best, the biggest area that we can see for the benefit of the residents of Los Altos Hills are going to be in in this general area that I've got. And you know what? I'll provide a map. The to the general manager for the next meeting that will show our response time. Metrics from El Monte Station, where our seven and 10-minute lines are and where we're going to see the biggest benefit will be highlighted. And I have that, I actually have that available. Currently, because I pulled it to see what what our net benefit would be to Los Altos Hills and then, of course, County Incorporated, which we pick up our responsibility back in the ranches, San Antonio area, Los Trancos. And then I don't have any data for Palo Alto yet, but I've been working and talking with Chief Blackshire, very excellent working relationship with him at Palo Alto. On how we're going to track the data for this unit.
George, you have a question?
Yeah, my question is a little bit of a detour, Chief Glass. Today on on summit of Highway 17, right at the border of Santa Cruz and Santa Clara County, I saw one of one of your units parked there at E80 it had on it. And I'm just wondering, is 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 there general forward deployment? I mean, along the spirit of what we're talking about with Station Eight, in general, in this county, a little more of that? Is that is that what I saw?
Uh, yeah, we always have that. So once any unit is committed for greater than 20 minutes, a notification is made within the computerated dispatch system. And it allows a prompt to the dispatcher to request a move-up unit. And again, we have a, throughout the county in our sphere of influence, we have 15 stations, of which nine of those are designated must-cover or core stations is the terminology that we use. So El Monte Fire Station at the Foothill College, Los Altos Hills Station, that is a core station. So anytime that station is left open for that 20 to 30-minute range, that's too much of a risk window for us to leave open. So we move an engine into that station. And then from there, that station can cover one to three jurisdictional response areas, depending on the geography and the routes of travel. So what you saw happening on Highway 17 was Engine 84, which is typically stationed at the Redwood Estates Fire Station, was committed to a motor vehicle accident. And Engine 80 had come up the hill to do two things. One, provide coverage to the rest of the Lexington Hills. Or support 84 in a safety support configuration. We do that on limited access freeways to protect the firefighters that are treating and the patients that are being treated on the on the highway. So we do that on the 280 corridor, 85, Highway 9, 17, and then any of our county expressways.
Fascinating. And that's the way to answer a question. I appreciate that, Chief.
Well, I'm glad you're happy, Commissioner.
All right, any further questions from the commissioners? Any questions or comments from this, from the public? All right, thank you, Chief Glass. We will now move on to item nine, receive the general manager report.
Oops.
Go ahead.
Report, I am so sorry.
Jay, you gonna go ahead? You find the report?
Yes, I'm. Put the wrong report up, so I'm going to do a screen share again. Hold on. Okay, am I in, am I in focus now?
Now we can see it.
Okay, so this is the cover, the cover slide to the general manager report. And if you would notice, these are photos of our legal records being scanned at the Office of County Council. So Cory and I spent a couple of days with Chris Chelliden back and forth, getting these records located, going through each of them. And then the last day, having the vendor come in and they're doing the scanning. So I just thought that was something that I wanted to note and took some photos of, and that populated the cover of to the slides. Then on the second slide, these are the events and activities that I thought worthy of highlighting for this month. And April 30th, Denise and I, Captain Blue Hen and I, have been attending the Highway 35 Fuel Brake Meetings. I wanted to mention that. May 3rd was the retaining its personnel for HR consulting for the operations manager, and I'll speak with that when I finish this this slide. And then May 4th, attended the Los Altos Hills ECC, the Emergency Communications Committee. April 27th and May 7th. These were meetings with the vendor at the County Council's office to review the legal boxes and legal files, making sure that they're going into digital form. And that they will be stored in hard copy at the Office of County Council and then be available to us in digital. And then we're going to put a public portal together. So all of our records that are available to the public will will be easily accessible. So that is a project that we're on based upon the recommendation from management audit to have our records digitized and available to county council, to the county. May 12th. We attended a county budget workshop, and there were two commissioners that attended that workshop along with the district clerk and myself. And that's the first round of county review of the district's budget. And then Cory will give you more information on that in her report. And then the last item to mention is we're continuing to collaborate with Councilmember Lisa Schmidt on the Los Altos Hill Fire Task Force. So those pretty much highlights from the general manager's report. And I can make comments now if if that is helpful on the district operations manager.
Right. I think what we need to do is we have, because we've got item H from the consent calendar moved to this time. Chris, I need your guidance here. I think what we have to do is we now need to get a motion to discuss item eight, a motion to approve item H from the consent calendar, so we can bring it to discussion. Or probably Jay, it'd be easier if you give the background and then we made a motion to for item H.
Sure.
President Warren, can I just make a?
Yes, please, Chris.
So it's already been removed from the consent agenda by the vote of the consent agenda, and it's a, it's a receive report item. It's a no action item. So I don't think you need a separate motion to hear the item. It was pulled from consent. It's now on the regular agenda item, but I would note that it is a received notice. There's no action by the commission necessary to be voted on. This relates to a contract that Jay exercised using her delegation of authorities. So the contract's already been executed. And I I think it's great for Jay and the commission to talk about the circumstances leading up to the contract and why why the personnel consultant was executed. I would suggest for consideration that getting into a detailed discussion about the position, the need for the position, the budgetary position. That that is not agendized for tonight, and that it might be better to give direction to staff to bring that back to a future meeting. Where they can present that issue. And if if I don't, it's a small contract, but I'm sure you could, you know, direct Jay with regard to the contract and Jay can use her discretion about, you know, implementing the contract until the the next matter is the matter of the position itself is brought back. But I wouldn't want to get too far down the road on the position and the job title for the position and the budget for the position. Because again, this is just a receive item relating to a contract that's already been executed. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chris, for the for the guidance. So Jay, why don't we go ahead? You provide the background and then we'll get a consensus from the staff on what further information we would like to see.
Was originally a part-time position in the district for many years. It was held by what was called the fire consultant at that time. And the position was never filled after the fire consultant left maybe a couple of years ago. And the fire consultant was responsible for the district infrastructure and particularly around hydrants. Fire consultant did a project of replacing a number of the hydrants in the district. So this is, this position was vetted two years ago, was in the budget two years ago, in the budget narrative two years ago, that's 2021. Was discussed with the commission and was not filled because we didn't have any applicants after searching without any consultant, any any assistance, didn't find any applicants available to us. And so this year, the position was again in the budget and is was put in as a full-time position. It had to go through the county for vetting. It's in the county executive's budget book. As as all of our personnel are. Again, it's in the 22 budget that was adopted by the commissioners and in the budget narrative. And so that's the history of the position. And right now we have three full-time equivalents working in the district. We're staffed at 4.5. We've not been able to fill a halftime position, which is an analyst position. Nor have we been able to fill this full-time position of a district operations. I think that probably Commissioner Spring may speak to this in his goal six, because we're looking at sustainability and stability for the district. And having staff available, particularly if someone gets ill, not available. We had that occur this month where we were down, one of our consultants was not available. And then the the work has to be picked up by the other staff members. So all of that has to do with the sustainability and the 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 stability of the district. And that may come up in goal six, I'm not sure. So that's kind of my overview, if that's helpful. The position, as I said, is described in two budget cycles. It's been in the standing committee discussion for the budget. It's it's currently in both of our budget narratives this year and this coming year. It's been approved by County OBA in the adopted budgets, in the county executive's budget. And the comments have been made that were made today by, were made in in past when this item has come up. So that, those are my remarks. I hope I didn't go too far with the remarks from the county council's perspective, but I hope it did give you some background on the position. Happy to answer any questions if that's within the scope of this discussion. Thank you.
All right, we'll take some limited questions. Terry?
Yeah, thanks. So Council Shelton, I I don't want to ask a question that's inappropriate that hasn't been agendized, but it relates to General Manager Logan's comment about the description of the position in the budget narrative. May I ask her a question about that?
Sure. I mean, I think it goes to her history about the fact that the position was unable to be filled. And that she specifically is seeking a consultant to help her source candidates to fill the position.
Yes, yes, that's right. So my question, thanks. My question, Jay, is this, is the again, I'm not sure where the boundary lies with respect to agendas and non-agendized issues, but the description in the in the budget narrative is that the that the Ops Manager will interface with county fire for coordinated fire protection prevention initiatives that will develop with a newly formed wildland fire team. Is that
Yes.
what what the position is intended to fill?
That's one of the roles of the position. Yes, thank you. I've had discussions with the fire chief and very excited about the wildland fire battalion chief coming on board for the for the county fire, for central fire. And having a this operations manager be able to interface with that position, I think is very important to have that occur. Yes, that is one of the functions, along with the infrastructure and the hydrant management. And also providing project management for our our current employees is very important. We don't have that project management piece to it. As we get into firewise communities, we get into all of those various aspects that are pretty complicated programs, having someone on a on a project manager level is very helpful. I don't want to get into too much detail if that's not appropriate, but that is contained in in the job description and the job specs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. Kavita?
Just a question. Why did we go from a part-time position to a full-time position?
I think it was the volume of work and the difficulty in recruiting persons who might be interested. It's it's difficult to do so. We tried for a year and just didn't have any success. So I guess it's based upon experience. And then, again, looking for the sustainability and at some point, we need, we need to build our succession, a program with our succession with staff. And feeling that we're kind of running out of time to do that and just trying another methodology by which to recruit qualified individuals who are interested in working and making that commitment to the fire district.
Great. Thank you, Jay. Okay. So I, what I'd like to do is move us on. I think we've we've answered the questions about this. It's a received notice on a contract that's already been executed. As the role as Jay engages and begins looking at the potential candidates and sourcing for the position, it will grow. And we'll have further discussion on this if she brings back a potential candidate and, you know, contract negotiations. Is there anyone on this, in the commission who would like to suggest otherwise, another course of action? All right. Thank you, Jay.
So, sorry. I I just like to endorse the notion that we have this Ops Manager from the perspective of the hazardous fuel reduction. As I think I'll mention later, there's some As I, I think I'll mention later, there's some resource constraint. Denise has asked to do just a ton of work on 20 hours and there are so many projects that, that, that could be done. And she's doing an amazing job holding them all down, but I think she could really use some help and that project management should do that.
Great. Thank you, Terry. Okay. So I think that concludes the general manager report and the receiving.
Any public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, Corey. Thank you. I need to make a public comment. Is there any public comment? All right, hearing or seeing none. Alan, are you raising your hand?
Yes, well, I'd just like to thank the commission for discussing the matter. I appreciate that the, this position has been in the budget, but. My experience with budgets is oftentimes you put things in a budget. You don't know whether you need it or not. But at some point in time, you make a justification for it and have a discussion. As you all know, I attend all these meetings and this is the first time I've heard the commissioners discuss the need for this position. And I appreciate the opportunity to hear, hear what that is. I'm a little bit confused about the responsibilities of the, of the position. And how it interfaces with. Captain Gluhan's responsibilities, but I'm sure that will be cleared up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Dave Stewart?
Hi, Dave Stewart here. I just have a question for Jay with respect to digitizing the. Records and I wanted to know whether that's images only or that there's going to be text tried to be extracted from the records.
Corey, can you respond to that? I know the records were, were scanned OCR. Is that correct? Can you confirm?
That is correct. Yes. So the, so the documents will be search, word searchable. So it's, I believe most of the documents are Word documents. Or you're asking if it would be just a PDF that's not searchable, Dave, as opposed to.
So they will. Yeah, if, if they're going to be OCR, that's the correct, that's a yes answer to my question.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. We, we looked into that quite thoroughly, Dave. So thank you for bringing that up.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Any further public comment? Okay, we will now move to item 10. Which is remarks by President Warren on the role of Los Alamos County Fire District relating to undergrounding of utilities and discussion by the commission. Recently, members of the public brought to our attention. That the town is engaged in an effort, is examining, studying, undergrounding certain utilities around the dis, around. The town of Los Alamos Hills. And is there any role for the district in this project? And so to address that public interest, we felt that it was necessary, we should bring it to the, you know, commission and. To have a quick discussion on the item. Thinking about this item and the role of the district. I believe based on the experience we had recently with the, the audit. That engaging in the, the fire district, engaging in. This undergrounding project is outside of our delegated authority. And so I don't believe that there's a role for the fire district in the undergrounding. Program that the town is engaging in. And so I'm not supportive of pursuing it any further, but I am one of seven. And so I would like to hear the rest of, you know, any other comments or ideas from the rest of the commission. George?
Why don't we start with me?
Sure.
Because I would express it in a stronger way and let me tell you why. You may know that in the city council that I have the, the head of the committee to study the undergrounding of utilities. And we've been approaching that for getting close to two years now. And I will say this. The town has a plan for both a small project and then an overall project for undergrounding. The town has a, a plan for funding that. And that plan does not involve the fire district. So the fire district is not being requested to provide any support. You could make a point about there is a fire aspect to the undergrounding work, but that doesn't mean that it's, that it's. That there needs to be an active fire district role. So let me just stop there and say. I, I don't believe we should discuss this any further. And I will say, I'm going to express that I'm, I'm quite frustrated. I have called up Mr. Epstein. And spoken to him very clearly and explained exactly the role and how we're doing this. And his persistence here, I do not find very helpful. And frankly, it's a distraction to me as I try to get the undergrounding done through the town, which I'm proceeding to do through that committee. Thank you.
All right. Is there any further comments from the commission? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? Alan? Alan, are you on mute?
No, I'm, I'm not. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. This isn't a question about whether or not undergrounding is. Appropriate or necessary or advisable. But I've listened to Commissioner Tyson in his role as a council member speak over and over and over again. About how this is important with regards to fire safety. And since the commission is charged with fire safety. I felt it would be appropriate for the commission to discuss it. The commission is also doing work on shaded fuel breaks. The shade, purpose of shaded fuel breaks is to assure. Access and egress for emergency vehicles and personnel and residents fleeing. And one of the strong arguments for undergrounding the wires adjacent to the fire. Building is exactly for that purpose, to assure that those wires do not come down and interfere with. Egress and access by either the fire personnel or by residents fleeing a fire. So it seems to me that it's quite relevant for the fire district to participate. I'm not asking the fire district to. Perform any of the function. I'm just suggesting that the fire district has a substantial amount of capital. That capital hasn't been allocated. For specific purposes. And this purpose seems to me to be one that is relevant to the fire district. And the funds could be used for that purpose. Commissioner Tyson talks about funding, the funding for the. Project around El Monte is coming from the funds from, from the town. Those funds are tax. Revenue raised from the residents, just like the funds that are provided to the fire commission. So it seems quite relevant to me that since the. The benefits that are going to be derived from this program are largely related to safety and fire protection and access and egress and. Related to the fire department, that it would be appropriate to have a cost sharing of this program. I'm not suggesting that the fire district needs to do anything other than consider writing a check to help offset the cost. And use the residents' tax money. To their benefit to support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Roger, you got your hand raised?
Just two, two small comments. One is that when it comes to assigning what to do with our capital assets, we have a number of strategic directions we need to consider. Overall, that's part of our strategic planning efforts that involve both the fire station. Being able to support the, the, the growth and eventual replacement of that as well as a whole other parcel with, we are discussing. What the future of that is related to capital needs there. So we don't just, you know, throw money at the first capital idea that comes along. Second, seems to me from a process point of view, this is a town effort. The town has not approached the fire district concerning this. The town seems to have it well in hand. So I'm not sure why. We need to discuss it until that time.
Thank you, Roger. Any further comments or questions from the commission? Any further comments from the public? All right. Seeing that I don't see a, a strong opinion from the commission to perceive with any further items around item 10. Will consider that closed and move on. All right, which we will now move to item 11, which is receive the emergency services manager report. Items A and B are the reports, emergency services manager Gluhan and cert program analyst BB, please provide the reports.
I'll start off. Thank you, President Warren. Thank you, commissioners and staff and public. And other presenters. Thank you. So this is our emergency services manager cert combination report here. I'll start off with emergency service manager update. Next slide, please. So again, a lot of the activities are standing meetings that I've had, you know, pretty much all along in this job. A little bit earlier, we were talking about the needs for an operations manager. I've been wearing many, many hats. Doing that, you know, kind of the best I can, but I think that that job could be. Those, some of those hats could be taken to another level that in a 20-hour employee, I'm just not able to do. So I would encourage. Looking into, to that hiring. I think that's a really important part of our, our moving forward. So I cert meetings, I continue to support our analyst BB with those. I attend. A Bay Area when she's unavailable with other activities and responsibilities. So I've done that also. Town council meetings to keep up again with what's happening locally with the town government. I'm attending multiple fire safe council meetings. I will be additionally attending. The skyline fire safe meeting. I currently attend the Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council. San Mateo Fire Safe Council and then the skyline. And then this is all to kind of coordinate. With the projects that are important because we know fire doesn't respect boundaries. So we want to know what programs are going in other areas to see where we can possibly collaborate or get ideas to make more efficiently. Expand our, our roles and our activities. Additionally, I've just been joining the emergency manager GIS monthly meeting, which was very timely. We ended up. A lot of the needs of that committee is around evacuation, which some of the zone haven't. Then that we've been. Know that's coming soon might meet. Making sure that the county level has an idea of everything going on. I also attend Zone Haven weekly meetings along with regular planning meetings that are scheduled. That's again, really good time to talk to the builder of the system. To ask specific questions and that happens once a week. PIO meetings are monthly. They, they. Were bi-weekly. They've moved to monthly. And again, we are going to that yellow tier. So I imagine that may even slow down a little bit as we move out of COVID. Some additional meetings, the evacuation route hardening and shaded fuel break treatments. Currently that we are waiting for scope on El Monte, Moody Road and El Monte. That those planning meetings are with Jim Young is the project manager. I have another slide that I'll discuss that in a little more detail after this slide. Again, we're continuing to advance our GIS technology. Another, we saw the data being scanned, paper data being scanned. This is a way. For us to integrate some of our metrics and, and data that we collect that we haven't had a historical. Place to find and organize that in, in other than a paper file way. Strategic planning meetings with some of the commissioners to assist with. Kind of specialist knowledge on some of the strategic goals where necessary. And continuing our wild land task force meetings with town council member Lisa Schmidt. Those have been very good to, to do the collaboration, a very beneficial. Kind of brainstorming that's going on to see what we can do to assist. I was asked to be a panel member on disasters. Don't wait. That was a. Project from a Boy Scout from Los Al, the town of Los Altos. He has been working very diligently on getting this prepared. He had a very good. Representation on a panel and we had discussions and scenario-based responses and then a question and answer session. Stanford Wood Institute, Bill Lane Center, fire, fire wildfire webinar. Really interesting, big supportive firewise communities as one of the solutions to some of the. The multiple problems, multiple layers of problems around fire preparedness in buoy environments. That was interesting to, to see that support on a. On a really scholarly level, not just a operational level. I've been out to Gardner Bowl School to help with a hazardous fuel reduction. The backside of the property has, has been a little bit neglected. So I've been assisting with helping to get that moving along. And then along with the ongoing mid pen, mid peninsula open space hearings around their wildfire resiliency and. Submitting information through their doodle. They sent out a doodle for some questions that, that I've been, respond, that I also responded to. And then I'll just continue with the ongoing hardening, route hardening. There'll be future shaded fuel break treatments plans. We're continuing evacuation planning meetings. I have a, an, a request from San Jose State professional to be involved in that planning. So that's a, a great collaboration. We hope to. Build that into our evacuation. Planning meetings and also maybe drills. And then we're continuing with the fire. To support. So we're getting. That saddle mount.
Please, we're losing you.
You're losing me. Okay. I will go back in. I had the pair getting so loud. I apologize. So the final, is that a little bit better?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And so this is kind of, I know I've, I've presented shaded fuel breaks when we did the Page Mo Road. And I originally selected Page Mo because Palo Alto, which we had a lot of discussions about. Our collaboration and our proximity, but they had been doing the one side of the road and there were very few individual residents. So this kind of breaks down what's involved in a shaded fuel break. Evacuation route hardening because we are talking about access egress and life safety. The shaded fuel break is a kind of more of a treatment modality. So as we expand these words and kind of expanding how they fit together. So kind of scope of work. This is just kind of delineating how we collaborate with fire safe council. They'll provide the scope of work. They're going to have that available for our next commission meeting. There's permissions that have to happen and that's on the actual property, private property owners. There's 114 separate properties along this evacuation planning. So that's a lot of permissions. That we'll seek permissions from all of the property owners. Initially, fire safe council is going to make the first attempt with a property owner. Usually that only gets about five to 10% response back and just a generic property owner. Additional attempts will be coordinated by our staff. When, depending on how many of those letters come back, we'll, we'll send out, we have the ability as the district to send out an actual. Property owner name through the data that we have in our system. Public information. This is a really important point that we're going to really expand on. Both agencies are going to get out information in a messaging campaign. So that the property owners kind of know what's coming and what the letter, we're going to integrate, integrate social media. Our website, fire safe council's website. And then we're also considering, we have tentative approval to utilize passive advertising with banners. In association with the town of Los Altos Hills on some of the banners that you see around town. This stands. Encroachment permits. We have to coordinate with the town because this is a new procedure. We've never done. Shaded fuel breaks to this degree. The Page Mo Road was pretty easy. We need to kind of establish what policies. Around what the expectations are and local requirements are going to be because some of the questions just haven't been asked yet. This also in the tree removal and tree trimming. I know they're kind of in. Changing some of the committees on how and what trees we're keeping, what size, things like that. What percentage tree can be removed before you need permits? So we just want to clarify some of those principles instead of asking for forgiveness if we do, you know, something that they're not, not happy with. So again, we want to keep. Our stakeholders and collaborators really in, involved and approving of what we do. A biological survey, fire safe council private that. They have a biologist that goes and looks. We do have a very sensitive environment that the Moody Road is all along Adobe Creek. Typically fishing, wildlife control, all aspects of. Any work that's done. So there's a lot of limitations in what can be done in and around a creek. But having a biological report, it doesn't necessarily mean that you can't do some of the hazardous fuel reduction in and around the creek. But you have to really talk to what is being affected when you do that. So that's where the biological report comes in. And then obviously traffic control. That's pretty obvious that we have to we'll do it in phases, probably one side of the road and then the other side of the road because that'll typically make it a little easier on the residents when we have those traffic control patterns. So I'm going to stop now and let Victoria, our general analyst and Cert program manager do her presentation and then I'll be available at the end for questions. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm going to make mine a little short and sweet because we have our teen cert PIO, her first PIO event, and I think that's much more exciting listening to me. But just to kind of give you an update on what I've been up to. You know, I'm still coaching or sorry, chairing the monthly program manager meeting. We've had a lot of forward momentum in deciding on some collaborations. One is going to be a joint recognition of the National Cert Program in September. So I'll be asking the town for a proclamation on that. And really look at some of our procedures and policies. We can combine forces here with some trainings as well as kind of, you know, provide a kind of united front, do a lot more collaborative with all the cert groups in in the county on trains and meetings and whatnot. I still attend the monthly PIO meeting. We have, we're going to pivot our schedule a little bit, but for right now, we're still doing our search general meeting. I just was able to get our, I think we're going to do our first meeting in person on June 2. So I'm really happy about that. We're going to play some cert skills game. It's going to be a general meeting and and some fun, some fun game stuff. So I'm very excited to be able to do that. We've been focusing a lot on medical ops and we're continuing to do that. Thank you to Mari and Terry Kearney for their awesome PowerPoints because I'm not great at them. Terry's a master and they're great instructing. So thank you for that. I'm also involved in the wildfire task force needs that we have with just Smith, really enjoy those as well. Really glad to be able to collaborate on those those ideas and brainstorming sessions. I also have been taking some ICMA coaching leadership seminars, learning a lot about you know, managing from the middle and things like that. So those are things that I really enjoy doing as well. We have an article coming up in our town on teen cert. So really excited, you know, I'll be kind of showing you guys an update later when it comes out. But we've been working on that a lot. We also launched a search newsletter that we're going to be you know, looking at as far as, you know, pushing out things to the public answer at the same time, some preparedness messaging and things like that. Thank you to Joan Sherlock for some of her great ideas and getting me on track with that. So the other that we've been doing is cleaning up our arc. As you can see on the left hand side, that's kind of what it looked like prior to us organizing it. I was concerned here, as you can all see. If I came to an activation, I would have to take all of these things out to get to anything. So we decided like, hey, it's probably time to look through the trailers. You know, the arc, it's been a while. So here's and I'm sorry, I have a more focused picture, but if you can see over here, all that stuff is now put away. We moved things over to the toy on trailer. The next phase of that is going to be going and organizing what's inside the arc to make more sense on an activation, what setup versus supply, what do I need to do in my role? Can I just, you know, grab a bin, making things also weatherproof. I noticed a lot of our things are paper copies and things like that. And as Melvin and Denise can attest to and Terry, you know, if you don't think about the weather and rain and wind, you can destroy your whole activation with having things blow away or get wet and you can't read them. So we're kind of focused on that as well. So really big thank you to some of our our certs here that came out and helped. The toy line trailer is now organized and cleaned out is amazing. Skill cert day was a success. I had so many people show up. I ran out of supplies for backpack refresh. We'll be having another one. Not complaining on that. Really great to see people coming out and became a little more of a social event at some level too, which was awesome. So thank you. Big thank you to the Los Altos Assistance League. They're offering us our patio for cert trainings, meetings, really nice. They want to do some collaborative efforts with us on Thursday nights after the farmer's market. They want to do some educational presentations along with with the fire district. So I'm really excited for that collaboration. We did some skill stations. You can see here, we did some triaging. We did some stop the bleed, tourniquet wounds, packing and wound care. We had a head to toe assessment. Big thanks to to Harry Guy from the Los Altos certs. He came out and helps me with some training. I let Mari and Terry off the hook on that one. I had them hooked in, but decided to give them a break. And here's our great presentation of our pet parade. So that's why you guys didn't get my PowerPoint. I'd like to introduce you to, this is Sid right here. There's Kiwi and look, that dog is smiling and that's Zeppelin. He was really enjoying himself. So we had a teen cert car and this is one of our teen cert board members. We had his car all ducked out and then my car with some emergency preparedness. Here's Nixol, had to sign up for SEC Alert. We had some preparedness evacuation wildfires signs up and how to prepare your pets since it was obviously a pet parade. Kiwi decided to take a nap. That was about the most you saw out of him is getting this picture. Sid was very, very inviting and very social. So we had people coming up to the car. People were really excited to see cert because they never really seen that before in any of their parades. Like, oh, my gosh, it's cert. That's so cool. So it was really nice. And then they did, it was live streamed. I don't really know how to, I'm going to see if I can get the recording, maybe show you guys a little bit of it the next, the next time around, but they also talked to our teen cert rep for like two minutes and they were asking him all kinds of questions about what teen cert is and he was able to like get some of the messaging out that we're starting this program and we actually had the the girls that were putting up the balloons in the cars. They want to know about cert. So I told them all the information. They're planning on signing up as well. So it was really nice to be out and about and in public. And I just want to thank SAC for all of his help. It started to rain. There was wind. We're trying to put all these banners on. It was kind of a hot mess, but we made made it through and I'm, it was, it was really fun. So I'm going to get sitting Kiwi again, but we're having to work on Kiwi and his social, his social stuff there. So without further ado, I showed you this last time and I'm going to have our PIO, Mahika, talk to you more about what we've been doing this last month. So go ahead and take it away, Mahika.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mahika and I'm the PIO and today I'll just share a presentation with you and talk a little bit about what we've been doing for the past month. Okay. So there are two boards, as you know, the Santa Clara County Teen Cert Board, which is the inaugural board, which kind of like looks over everything. And then there's the LA slash Los Altos Hills Board. And it's made with about 10 members, all high school members on each of them, and we work together and we meet every Sunday and kind of like plan different events or things that we want to focus our attention on for upcoming events. So this is our current mission statement, if you would like to read it. We basically, our goal is just to or we develop this mission statement. Our goal is just to really introduce teens and make them familiar with all the emergency response procedures because we know that teens don't get a lot of as much exposure as they maybe should in case of an emergency. So this is our mission statement. Okay. And some things that we've been doing this past month to raise awareness is we have created, like Victoria talked about in our town article, the communications team actually wrote this article and we're having it processed in the Los Altos Hills, our town. It should go up in a few days. And these are the two on our social media, we have created two Instagram accounts, one for the Santa Clara County teenager and one for the Los Altos and Los Altos Hills teenager. This is where we post like, we're going to post like updates. We have a big meeting today, skill day, like just advertising upcoming events and just hosting different things. Another thing that we're doing is actually a raffle. We're doing a raffle to raise more awareness again and more traffic on our social media, just so more people like get introduced to teen sir and what we do. A lot of people don't really know that there is a program for teens to learn about emergency preparedness. So we're just trying to implement this through Instagram. So we are doing a raffle where you can follow the account and then share this post on your story and then we're going to pick three people and and then you can like tag people do all the cool Instagram stuff and then we're going to put all the people who have done that in a raffle and we're going to pick a winner and they're going to get these different prizes. Like, for example, this is a backpack with all of these emergency preparedness items. And then for the Los Altos Hills, there's a lot of different stuff. It's, it's, it's hopefully it'll work how we want it to. And then some other things we've been doing for our members, we have someone developing shirts where we all voted on a shirt design. And of course you saw some pictures of the pet parade. So yeah, just little things that we've been doing to try and raise awareness about our group and just like expand our team more.
That's it. Thank you, Mahika. Yes, I'm really allowing them to with my oversight, obviously, to create a lot of these ideas on their own. They came up the raffle idea. They're also starting to push into the high school. Mountain View is interested in starting a club next fall as well as Los Altos High. So we'll be creating club as well at the high school. So really excited to be able to do that. Thank you very much. Very good for your first your first public presentation PIO. Good job.
Beautifully done. Great mission statement. Nice work.
Thank you. That's it. That's it for me. Any questions for Denise, Mahika or myself?
Roger, you've got a question?
You're muted. Roger, you're muted.
Roger, we can't hear you.
Thank you so much. Sorry, made a mistake. I just wanted to run compliment Mahika on a professional report that makes us look bad. So so polished and so professional. I'm really impressed. I want to also say that while you're talking, I just added another follower to both Instagram accounts. So I'm getting the totals up. I encourage everyone to do that. And I say in my five or six years of being here, I don't know why nothing thrills me more than seeing the energy that's going into teen cert right now and just unbelievable. And I hope, by the way, I can buy a shirt from one of your organization. Separate from the teen cert things. I just want to say I don't want us to get jaded by the reports from both Denise and Victoria at how long those lists are of the things they are doing. And I just want to look back over it. To me, it's stunning how we're getting used to this incredible number of activities and interfacing with other groups and just different efforts in every direction going on. I just want to draw a contrast to where we were year and a half, two years ago. Just getting everything started off the ground. Look how these, you know, one and a half people have things rolling in so many, many directions. Now I say that kind of as a lead into what I'm going to speak about in a few minutes, but I was just struck by how long these lists of things we are involved with are and we shouldn't take it for granted. So I'm, I'm continue to be impressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. All right. Thank you. Emergency Service Manager Gluhan, Cert Program Coordinator. BB and teen cert member Mahika, is there any further comments or questions from the commission? Any comments or questions from the public? All right. Thank you, team. Really appreciate it. It's tremendous amount of work going on. So we'll now move to item 12, which is the integrated hazardous fuel reduction update. Item 12A is the update, emergency services manager Gluhan. Please introduce the item.
Thank you again, everyone. If this is going to be very, very short because we are getting late, but I just again thank you, Roger, for your comments or commissioner screen. I really want to thank, you know, Victoria for all the work getting a program like this off the ground. She doesn't have support from anybody but Los Altos Hills and the other teens and Mountain View and Los Altos. So it's really been typically county fire gives academies and we're doing this independently of that. So it's been really a challenge for her. So thank you again. And again, I just want to mention that back in December of 2019, general manager Logan and I were at a Los Altos Hills Town Council meeting and then Commissioner or I'm sorry, Town Council Member Corrigan really asked us to engage with teens and do everything we could. And then COVID hit. We had to cancel the youth commissioner meeting that that year. This year, this March, we went ahead and supported that along with Mayor Cavita, Tonka, and then also now this cert program. This is amazing. This is really pulling in not only the teens, getting them in a direction of leadership and training, but also we were doing alongside that an adult cert program. So we're going to be a lot of asks for volunteering. So please consider stepping up and volunteering. We can give you some moolah and make you a nice victim or patient for one of these events. But again, I just really want to say how much staff support we've gotten this. And again, thank you just over the top on this, Victoria. Thank you. Back to the the item 12. The home ignition zone at the fire safe council meeting today for Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council. Because of the move to the yellow zone, they're going to be able to actively get HIZs caught up. Countywide, they're about 80 down because of COVID staffing issues. It's, you know, been a challenge to do the the HIZ. So they're going to get full swing, hope to be all done by June with the backlog. Those aren't only Los Altos Hills. That's countywide, but a big portion of them are a somewhat Los Altos Hills. And then the goats came yesterday. I was up there in the morning. They hadn't been set up yet, but they, I was confirmed by Phil Witt from Person of Hills Water that they are here. I'm going up tomorrow with Jackson Ricketts, who you might recognize the name, did the drone footage from our parcel project. We're going to do some long needed data collection around where the goats go, get some light, some footage of the before and after and the goats hopefully at work. So we're going to do that tomorrow morning. I think that that, oh, firewise also, and I mentioned Saddle Mountain, they've applied. They've started their online process with becoming certified. We have a request in to meet as with their board and fire safe council for the leadership meeting to get their started on their hazardous risk plan for their community. So we're moving forward with that. And then we have some other evacuation workshops that we hope to go on to firewise communities. That's the end of my report. Thank you. I can take any questions.
Thank you, Denise. Any questions or comments from the council? The commission? Any comments or questions from the public? All right, seeing none, we will now move to item 13, which is the financial consultant report and district clerk report. Item 13A is an update on the fiscal 2021 22 budget and the county process fiscal financial consultant and district clerk Burgis, please provide the update.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And just we'll try to give a very brief update if we could go to page two of the slide. So as Jay reported, May 12, we had the Board of Supervisors Budget Workshop. That's where the recommended budget by the county executive was reviewed by Board of Supervisors on their agenda. The Board of Supervisors Budget Hearings are coming up 14th, 15th and the 17th. And this is when Board Supervisors will consider the county executives fiscal year 2122 revised recommended budget for final approval. We are expected to be heard for consideration on June 15. And then finally, those who are very perceptive will notice that the recommended budget by the county executive was off half a million dollars from what you as the commissioners approved. And this is because well, first of all, half a million for the the water tender, which we had been referring to as a water pumper on our budget. That was counted twice on their recommended budget. So they were showing our expenditures at half a million more than what was approved. You also notice in our budget, we had approved 550 for the water tender, but we've changed that now to half a million to match counties. Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District's budget. Do we want to align with them? So I am working right now with the County Office of Budget Analysis. We are trying to get the amount adjusted so that when the budget hearings are presented, it will be in line with the numbers that the commission approved. If that can't be done, I am advised that there can be budget modification so that it will match. So one way or another, we're going to get, get the two budgets to match. And then next month, I am going to bring back to you an amended fiscal year 22 budget, budget narrative. next month, um I am going to bring back to you an amended uh fiscal year twenty-two budget, budget narrative budget by month for your approval. Um this will have the change on the cost of that water pumper. And we're also looking to since we now know that funding for Station Eight is is more than was budgeted, possibly moving contingency in that that contract services. So we're not gonna change total contract services, but we're we're gonna kind of move around maybe where some of the budget was allocated. Um so that I will bring to you next month. Um and then, like I said, that'll be an amended amended final approved budget. So um I think that's the end of my report then. I don't know if anyone has any questions or clarification?
Any further questions or comments from the commissioners? All right. Is there any public comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Uh thank you very much. We will now move to item fourteen, which is the twenty twenty-one twenty-two strategic goals. Items fourteen A is the report on the implementation of goals three and six. Strategic Planning Consultant Scott, please introduce the item.
Thank you, President Warren. Good evening, everyone. We're here on this item tonight to talk again about the strategic plan. And um as you all may recall, there are six strategic goals and uh commissioners are aligned with each of those goals. And I would like to just pick up from a comment made, several comments made throughout the meeting about all the various things staff are doing and um different um uh projects and programs. And I I will add on a layer that the commissioners are also doing really, really great work um in terms of thinking about their strategic goal, making a path forward and making some great progress. So tonight we will hear about a strategic goal number three. And I will introduce Commissioner Terry Kearney. And as soon as he's completed, I will then introduce our next um commissioner who will be speaking. And um Commissioner Kearney is in his first term on the on the commission and serves on the district's hazardous fuel reduction subcommittee. He has completed the CERT Academy and serves as a Red Cross Disaster Services volunteer and has been deployed to disaster events, including the car camp and Mendocino complex fires. So I will turn it over to Commissioner Kearney.
Uh thank you. Um I'm no longer uh working with the Red Cross, but I appreciate the um the attribution. Um it that it's a great organization. It was a lot of fun working with them, but I was just too busy working on things like the County Fire District. Um so can I don't know who has the slides. So they disappeared into an email somewhere. Is someone gonna share a screen or do you?
Um uh usually we share our own slides. Do you want me to pull them up?
Uh yeah, could you?
Yeah, uh just talk about something for a minute while I
I'll find uh I'll find. Hang on. Uh can I? Oops. That's not good. Share screen. Yeah, I'm not able to share my screen, uh Victoria.
You are co-host. Let me um
Yeah, I don't know. If you could, uh yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to find him.
Oh, now I'm um okay, let me try again. Oops. Can people see that?
Yeah, we can see it.
Hmm.
But you're not in presentation.
There you go.
How about that?
Yeah.
Okay, let me um you just saw the whole slide check, so so um let's let's uh it's it's getting late, so let me just cut to the chase. There um obviously, this is one of six uh strategic goals that are laid out in in detail in the strategic plan for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Um there are specific objectives targeting the reduction of hazardous fuel reduction in the district. And why are we reducing hazardous fuel in the district? It's to mitigate risk and to, you know, increase the resiliency of the community. The specific objectives um relate to identifying high uh fire risk areas like road sides. You heard Denise uh talk about the fire hardening, the hardening of evacuation routes. Um there's also a mention of of identifying uh uh fire risk areas in the open space, and I'll get to that in a second. Um home ignition zone HIZ assessment, super important. Uh you've heard uh Captain Gluhand talk about that extensively. It is a specific objection uh of objective that we have um for a strategic goal three. Using uh technology to target the mitigation that we're looking at is also a super important objective and enhancing and expanding all of these programs. So um let's talk about the programs themselves. So there are six of them too. Um I I and these are just the i- integrated hazardous fuel reduction programs. There are other programs like Firewise that relate to these or um Commissioner Sherlock's work on um publication and uh community outreach. All of these things relate, but these are specific, these are projects that are specifically related to removing fuel from the district. So um in order, they are chipping and debris, monthly drop off, goat grazing, shaded fuel breaks. You've heard of all these. Home ignition, the HIZ assessment, open fuel break. You probably haven't heard of that since we talked about it uh for our budget approval process. Um I'm not gonna have specific comments about that um tonight. The reason that it was put in the budget is that as a result of the CZU fire, um the realization was had that hey, there's no fuel break, open space fuel break uh between the CZU fire and two eighty. And we're between two eighty and the CZU fire. So um this is a complex, you know, multi uh agency, multi-county issue. Um and we're it it's work is in pro- progress, but I I'm not in a position tonight to report out on that specific uh project. So let's uh go through these in order. So brush chipping, super um successful in my view. Um for the past year, uh we've removed uh from the district by my estimation over a thousand tons of hazardous fuel. And where's that calculation from? So the um so the Fire Safe Council, which has managed this project since October nineteenth, estimates that we have almost forty thousand cubic acres. That's pre-chipping. And based on uh the um the data provided by California uh uh the California government and the EPA, uh a um a cubic yard of the kind of brush that we chip typically weighs about a hundred and twenty-seven pounds. Um so I conservatively reduced that by fifty percent. And so at sixty pounds per cubic yard, a thousand tons is just a lot of it. That's a couple seven forty, you know, seven forty-seven jetliners. It costs three hundred thousand dollars to get that out of the district. It costs per ton is about two hundred and fifty dollars. Um like I said, it's integrated into our GS GIS system, which is very important. As you can see from this image on the on the right, the gray properties are properties that are involved in the program. They have, you know, participated in in having material from their property chipped. Um so we can focus on that. We can identify who they are. We can identify who hasn't. Um and we're good, we're we're in the process of of trying to reach out to the people who aren't um participating and get them to and to identify the the clusters of uh of properties that that are participating and work towards uh HIZ and uh fire safe uh community um conversations with them. So, next slide. Um this is a legacy program. This is the monthly drop off. It's now over at um uh Purosoma Park. You can see, I mean, compared to to our program, the tonnage is dramatically less. Um the cost is about fifty thousand dollars. This is the uh the green waste recovery uh effort where people go up and and dump their yard waste. Um and it's uh re- recycled by or recovered by green waste. You can see the cost per ton is significantly more, right? Almost six hundred dollars per ton uh compared to two hundred and fifty at the at the at the um reasonable assumption of only sixty pounds per cubic yard for ours. So um it it's it's a legacy program. I think it makes sense for us to 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 think critically about how we can integrate the people who are using that program into ours at a co- cost benefit. Um it uh it does, there are differences between the programs. Um so the the uh the program run by the um green waste recovery, which we uh reimburse the 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 town for it picks up things like yard uh lawn, um you know, uh cut grass and things like that 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 our program doesn't do. Um so the next is the goat grazing. You've heard that. Um my favorite quote of maybe all time on this commission is General Manager Logan's description that is that it is a bucolic event that delights the community. Um so it's you know, people like the goats and to the extent that it can be used as a public relation, you know, uh opportunity, I think that's great. It it it's it's not entirely clear to me why that particular fuel break is there. It's about a mile long and thirty feet wide. Um it dates back to to two thousand six. It is ecologically friendly. It is, you know, getting at uh fuel that's very hard to access and burn and preserve. But I think it would behoove it it the 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 district and I'm gonna be working with uh um Captain Gluhand. I'm 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 thinking she's collecting, she said she's collecting data on this on this year's efforts. I think it makes sense for us to say, is this something that we want to expand? This is something we wanna um continue. The next program is uh shaded fuel breaks. I don't wanna repeat anything that uh uh Captain Gluhand already said about that. Obviously, it it hardens these routes that are so important for firefighters to get in and and residents to get out. It's also managed by Fire Safe Council. Uh we did complete uh phases one and two of Page Mill to great success and and Captain Gluhand didn't. I don't think she 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 gives the effort about uh adequate um kudos. As I understand that this is that that program is part of what uh the the uh shaded fuel break efforts on uh thirty-five are looking to as an example of what can be done. As as uh as Captain Gluhand said, Moody Road is in process is really complicated. I I we live on Moody. We're one of those addresses that they're gonna need to send a letter to. Um I I think it's super important for us to think about um Rancho Santa Fe. I mean, I'm sorry, Rancho San Antonio. Uh this is a map from Mid Penn and their uh um uh their fire uh resilience um programs. Um and you can see that they they consider the uh the routes out of San Antonio. This is Gates uh nine and ten. One goes to Ravensbury and then onto Magdalena and the other is out Mora. And I think it would behoove us to to think about those um to the extent that we uh after we successfully conclude the Moody Road project. Home ignition zone assessment, again, I think we're all aware of it, but um it is also managed by Fire Safe Council. They send out a a uh an expert who who does a one hour uh in-person review of the property and home hardening. They make specific recommendations. Costs, as I understand it, about four to fi- four hundred to four hundred and fifty dollars in assessment. And we need to really, I I think it's very important for us to 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 get to how we encourage additional. You saw that the the beige um properties on the map earlier. And we need to encourage people that aren't, you know, chipping and aren't involved in HIZ to get involved. As as Captain Gluhand said, that it it we're constrained by COVID, we're constrained by um uh fire safe staffing. But we need to think about how we can, you know, once that that log jam gets uh broken, we need to figure out how to encourage follow-through. And and I think it's super important for us to consider pushing for pushing harder for cost sharing assistance. So the the city of Santa Santa Saratoga um uh reimburses up to a thousand dollars for um uh following through on the uh recommendations of uh Fire Safe Council's HIZ. Um we could also, we're also thinking about a certificate that people could use to get um, you know, uh to decrease the rate of their insurance. Um yeah, and so this also integrates with Fire Safe uh Firewise communities. This is not Firewise and correct me if I'm wrong, uh Captain Gluhand, Firewise is not essentially about removing uh you know, material, but it is about coalescing, you know, neighbors um to do, you know, what they can do collectively. So your neighbor's property is as much a hazard to your house as your property is. And so it's super important for us, as the HIZ program gets pushed forward, you know, that we we integrate those into the Firewise communities. And I know that um that uh council member Schmidt, who I think is on the phone, um uh has a has laid down a a mighty goal of fifty percent of the of the town uh being uh HIZ assessed uh at some date in the future. And I think we can um we can push, you know, far down that road um with this with these projects. So um yeah, so then then there are future collaborations. So I know that um everyone is is uh working with uh uh council member Schmidt. I have coffee with her, so um I it's super important that we interact with the town. Everybody knows that. I think it's important. I know that that there is there is much uh said about the the power lines down by the fire station, but anybody who lives in that vicinity knows how terrible the um, you know, the fuel load is on the Foothill College side of Almonte Road. That's it in February. Right now it's green, but it's still as choked with fuel as as that. So I think it makes sense for us to work, you know, not just as a shaded fuel break, but with collaborative collaboratively with Foothill College to see if we can't, you know, get some of that um hygienically tuned up. I also think my personal view, having, you know, watched uh PG&E cut down trees, you know, brutally in front of our house, um and the roads and airports cutting down rose bushes and 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 junkus that we've, you know, nursed over the years. I think it's important for us to collaborate with the people who come through our community and try to um manage risk to their ignition source, i.e. the power lines. So, you know, PG&E is trying to manage that risk by keeping things from falling on the power lines. And roads and airports comes through and mows their right of way. Um I think it would make sense for us to respect the fact that those people are coming through and dealing with what they consider a a significant risk to our community, that ignition source, and work on it from the a collaborative you know, hazardous fuel reduction. What else can we do with them to reduce the fuel? Um not just in um along the evacuation bout routes, but wherever else they go. So that's what I have. I probably went too long, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to uh to take them. That's the end of my report.
Any questions from commissioners? And if not, um I will introduce Commissioner Roger Spreen, who is in his second term on the commission and uh Commissioner Spreen worked closely with uh former Commissioner Price on implementation of the twenty fifteen twenty twenty strategic plan. And he also oversees online web and email capacities for the district. And so let me turn it over to Commissioner Spreen for a presentation.
Great. Thank you. Uh I know it's getting late, so we'll go quickly. Um one thing I'll mention is that goal six, I wanna spend a little time just explaining what it is because it's a little different than the others. The others tend to be about nouns and verbs. They're about specific programs and projects and activities where goal six is about adjectives, sustainability and stability. And that really kind of crosses uh across the organization and some of the other projects and and programs discussed in the others. But it takes a slightly different view uh than the other goals do. So it's uh so here is goal six. Um and notice it is about, it's focused on the organization and how we allocate resources to make ourselves stable and sustainable. You know, we've gone through an incredible amount of growth uh and evolution over the past couple of years. Uh and the question is, you know, uh how do we make sure this is a maintainable organization uh that lives on beyond any of us and that we're not, it's not indispensable or that 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 none of us are indispensable to make any organization really perform uh and it can go on. And in particular, the term valued is important because coming out of the management audit, you know, one of the things we learned is that we have to be working in a regional way where other organizations, both our residents and our outside communities recognize the value of what we're doing. So it really is about uh this goal is both internal, looking at how we make sure we are sustainable and also external. this goal is both internal, looking at how we make sure we are sustainable and also external, looking at how do we make sure we really are regionally focused so that the entire Bay Area sees us as a permanent part of the solution for fire safety. How do we do that? Well, let's talk about the objectives, but really they break down to
Roger, are you advancing your slides?
I'm sorry?
I'm not seeing your slides advance.
I'm just got some bullet points.
And we're still, I'm still seeing slide one.
Oh. Sharing is pause. Bring your shared window to the front. Let me see. Okay. Let me see here.
All right, now I can see.
Okay, let me try again. Play from current slide. Do you see deliverables?
Yeah, I'm seeing deliverables now.
Okay, we'll go from there. Oh, let's go down. Let's go, let's move on. So what are the deliverables of this, these adjectives? Here's the the focus is, one is making sure that we participate in the countywide activities going on and we know that there, you know, both the review and a plan study occurring. And as those occur during this year, coming year, we'll be looking at how does our organization have to change to stay in context with what is decided on a countywide level? We want to make sure that our administration is sustainable and that's going to affect what is our staffing, what are the the types of roles? We discussed a little of that today already to make sure we are meeting operational needs. A a key part of this is to be sustainable, how do we leverage the county? You know, we're in the past six months, we've really moved to using a lot of the county's resources, both legal, infrastructural, data, digitization and so forth. We want to continue finding ways to leverage that expertise and abilities that we don't need to duplicate. A key part of sustainability is talking about staffing succession. You know, we've been so focused on just making sure we have hands to get things done. We also need to be thinking about how do we make sure this organization can sustain people moving on and people, you know, not being indispensable in their role so that multiple people can cover different projects. In addition, we want to make sure that budget decisions are strategically consistent and sustainable. You know, we were delving more both into how we do our budget so that all the council members are involved, commissioners are involved. But also, how do we make sure that's properly aligned with the countywide decisions and the county budget process? Key element of sustainability is looking for space. We all know this is a problem. We need to be looking
You want slide four, Roger?
Look on I'll just, I'll just
Yeah, there we go.
It's having a problem. Okay. Identifying space for training and meetings and assets is a key thing, and this is going to become a capital issue. Where can we find space? Who can we work with to be at the town, be at Foothill College, be at our own parcel? What can we do to to make sure that we will have space for all the things we need, including employees, including meetings, including any assets we have? And right now we're very dependent on others, sort of the kindness of strangers, if you will, to have all our assets and meetings occur. We also will be looking at grant funding to augment those services where possible on an ongoing basis. And finally, we want to talk more specifically about the district parcel, how to use that to increase fire protection capabilities overall. So I hope you can see the last slide, which is the key one, which is progress report. In the last three or four months, we have been involved with both reopening of Station Eight because that's clearly a part of sustainability. How do we expand our regional viewpoint? How do we get involved with our neighbors in a way that they see us as a permanent solution to the connected web of fire prevention services? So this is a key part for us feeling sustainable and and stable in how we sit across the county. Second thing we've been working on, we've met and both brainstormed about the budget process and and met with Corey as well. And I think I mentioned this last month only because I wanted to put it in your mind that we want to add something to the budget process this year to get commissioners involved earlier. In years past, we've had a subcommittee where we've sort of worked to try and bring all the subcommittees together. Itself being brought into a subcommittee and then feeding into Corey's process with Jay. And we think we want to find a way, something more akin to what town does and have a meeting where all the commissioners can look at the entire viewpoint of the the budget early on before things get get detailed out. So given that process starts around October, sometime in the Septemberish timeframe, we want to schedule a meeting where we can, all commissioners will be there to discuss the the wide ranging budget. We've also spent time looking at our staffing needs and we've talked a lot about operations manager in the this meeting. That is part of what we've been discussing here as part of sustainability. We've also been looking at the fact that we've been in some ways out in front of our skis, as the expression goes, where in the past two years, we've really ramped up the activities, events and really haven't ramped up our staffing to match. And we're highly dependent on a few people. And we, that's, this is where the discussion of how can we bring sustainability, given that we don't have a a office place for everybody, how can we make sure that there's coverage for everything? How can we make sure that if one person is is pulled away for any reason, there's someone else who can pick up the slack, can cover those in the meetings and interfacing with others? And what is the, how does that role, you know, what roles do we need to make sure there's sufficient coverage so that we don't end up with indispensable people? You know, the, you're not a stable organization if everybody you have is totally indispensable. So this is where some of the discussions for what an operations manager, for example, is needed and why, why that's needed. I also mentioned that, you know, originally the operations person was a halftime position when all it dealt with was fire hydrants. We have a need for both fire hydrant operations as well as project management across all these at these activities going on. So this is one of the things that this goal, this goal is focused on is how do we make sure we really have the right staffing, the right kind of roles to make sure we're not really leaning too heavily on staff in a way that isn't sustainable, both for us as an organization and for them as employees? You know, if the employees don't feel that their roles are sustainable, we're not in a stable situation. And finally, part of the stability of the organization is looking at what are our IT processes? And this crosses a lot of boundaries as well. This is one of the reasons why we pushed everyone to get on a more robust infrastructural platform. So it's why every, all our account, all our commissioners now have email through a system that is more robust, that is meant to be used in a organizational way. We have, we've used that to provide some accessibility through the website. You are, you may not know it, but you are now accessible through the website, not with your email address being seen. We don't want those on the website because we don't want spam coming through to everybody. But now the contact page has been advanced to where they can pick either to send a comment to all the commissioners or send a comment to a specific commissioner if they want through the the website. And that will come through your new email addresses. We've fixed, we've advanced some of the search, the website. I know that Alan Epstein has brought that to our attention. We've made some fixes to that to where it should be work better to finding documents and not just having sort of stuff come back that isn't usable. We want our IT to be helpful, both us and our residents. We're working on providing data sharing, both within our various subcommittees and groups as well as to the public. And also bringing CIRC in under that over time, so we can have one infrastructure that's maintainable. The, and we're also looking at the archiving needs. Now that we're getting everything digitized properly, how can we make it so that it's usable and searchable? So all these things are meant to make the organization will exist beyond just us. So that's what we've been working on over the past four months. That's the end of my progress report. Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Spreen and President Warren. That concludes the strategic plan update for tonight, and we will return on June fifteenth at the commission meeting for the remaining two updates on the strategic plan.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners on the two strategic plan updates? Any comments from the public? Alan?
Yes, thank you. I just have a question and maybe it's for Commissioner Attorney, but where where does the open space fit into this into your efforts? And if I'm mistaken, it's not in your effort area. I apologize, but many of us in town believe the likelihood of a fire is going to approach us from the west and it's going to burn through the open space into the town. And I'm just curious as to what actions are being taken with regards to the open space and cooperation with them. Thank you.
Yeah, great question, Alan. It's super important and and I know that it is of concern to a lot of residents. And so so a couple of things about the open space. As I understand that the research and 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 most research, so let me preface the 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 comment on the research that's been done. It it's it's not for, if you understand the scientific method, it's very difficult to apply the scientific method to fire mitigation. It's almost impossible, if not impossible, to to test a hypothesis by burning a neighborhood or controlling, you know, an experiment like that. So most of the data that are out there are observational and descriptive using very large data sets. As I understand it, those data and the research by a number of experts say that the home hardening and defensive space correlates much better with structure survivability than does mediation in open space and adjacent wildlands. So while it is absolutely the case, I I believe that is absolutely the case, that, you know, a hundred years of a hundred percent fire suppression, starting with the Forest Service has led to an abundance of fuel that is a considerable factor in the wildfire problems that we see today. And that's not to say that it is the only factor. And so controlling that is important, but as I understand the science, again, the descriptive science, it is that the the first effort that needs to be made in a multivariate system like that is we need to harden our homes and we need to create that defensive space. The purpose of those two things is not only to protect the individuals who live there if they have to shelter in place, but to provide a safe platform from which firefighters can attack the fire. We also need to harden the access routes so that residents can evacuate and firefighters can get in safely and efficiently. And so those are the first highest priorities that we have on our list as a commission. And that's not to say we're that that we're not focused also on on the open space that we obviously live in and near. But to the extent that 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 our staffing and funds are limited, we're putting most of that effort in that domain. So with respect to the four hundred thousand dollars that's currently in the budget for open space projects, like I said, I I maybe I maybe I didn't make it clear. So that was put into the budget specifically because we are concerned about the open space that's to the west of us. I live on Moody Road. I get it. We were under the evacuation warning. So it is of 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 concern, emergent concern to the district that we are now aware that that two eighty was considered to be, you know, the fire break for the eastward progress of the CZU fire. That doesn't do people in Los Altos Hills very much good. So one of the important things that that Captain Gluhann has been doing is sitting on those meetings and and participating in the collaborative effort to figure out what are we going to do with those wildlands? And and I'll let her speak to that, but as I I have spoken with her and my understanding is that those are very, very nascent. They're a very nascent state. And so I don't think we're at a position yet to 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 articulate exactly what the what the efforts are going to blossom into. I would say, as I did with respect to the to the mid pen plan for Rancho San Antonio, you know, I I can pull up that slide again. I can show you what it is that they're doing on their side of of the boundary between Mid Penn, Rancho San Antonio and and the district. And they've got, if you remember those yellow lines, those are two hundred foot fuel breaks. They've got three hundred foot fuel breaks. They have plans for Kilo. They have a very involved plan on what they're going to do in that park and they have plans for using Mora and Ravensbury as evacuation routes. I should say they also have plans for using Moody as an evacuation route. And Elena. So it's important and and I know that Captain Gluhann and General Manager Logan have been in very close contact and have personal relationships with with Mid Penn and are working with them to understand exactly what it is that those plans are and how we can collaborate with them on that. So it, I apologize for maybe a longer answer and maybe with some background that was unnecessary, but maybe helpful. That's what, that's, that's what we're doing with respect to the open space to the rest of us.
Great. Thank you, Terry. Any further public questions or comments? All right. In summation, what I'd just like to say is is that, you know, between the two reports this week and the reports we had last month, I'm just deeply impressed with the level of thinking and you know, deep thinking and problem solving and expertise that my fellow commissioners are bringing to these areas of the strategic plan. So thank you, guys, for the effort you're putting into, yeah, our our roadmap forward. So thank you for the effort that you're putting into it. All right. If there's nothing further on item fourteen, we will move on to item fifteen, which is commission member reports. This is the opportunity for commissioners to provide reports on or reports or any future agenda topics. Are there any comments from the commissioners for item fifteen? Seeing none? Thank you. There's any public comment? Seeing none? All right. Well, now move on to everyone's favorite item sixteen, which is adjournment, adjournment. This concludes the May eighteenth, twenty twenty one regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. The meeting is adjourned at nine forty nine P M. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom on June fifteenth at twenty twenty one at seven P M. Sir, General Analyst Bebe, please stop the recording.